Grant us wisdom in our discussions and decisions that we may serve our community with integrity, fairness, and compassion. May new ideas blossom, and may our efforts bring forth lasting good. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Snee.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Dougherty.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Let the record show that seven of seven council members are present. Minutes from the May 5th, 2025 Regular and Committee of the Whole meeting were distributed. Are there any substitutions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will stand presented, will stand as presented. Committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilwoman Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Dougherty.
No report, Madam President.
Materials and Equipment, Councilwoman Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilwoman Hayes.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilwoman Snee.
No report at this time, Madam President.
There is no report for Streets, Sidewalks, and Sewers. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. An Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee meeting was held on Monday, May 12th, 2025 in council chambers. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the possible renaming of a street or other honor for a certain individual. In attendance were committee members Scott Horniman, Aaron Jones, and Cheyenne Thacker. Also in attendance were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Law Director Zachary Fowler, and Councilmember Kevin Reesner. Horniman called the meeting to order at 5:17 PM. He explained that he had not received any requests for legislation, and the intent of the meeting was to have a discussion about the process and qualifications of renaming a street. Horniman also explained that the committee meeting was assigned based on comments by Mark King during oral communication at a recent city council meeting. Mr. King was very grateful for the work and service of former, former Mayor Aaron Montz. He thought renaming Court Street or another street in town to honor Aaron Montz would be a great way to show gratitude. Horniman also expressed his gratitude and complimented the work and service of former, former Mayor Montz. He also expressed interest in seeing if there were other individuals who might be deserving of similar honors in the future. Thacker said her opinion would be to wait until individuals are retired or deceased. She said it was nothing against Montz, just generally more, more appropriate after someone has retired or passed, because then it gives the scope of an entire individual's career. Jones agreed and reminded the committee that Tiffin did have to remove an individual's name before. Horniman expressed that he leaned more towards honoring after retirement than a posthumous dedication. That way, the recipient could enjoy the honor with their family while they were still living. Horniman then summarized an email he had received from Councilmember Reesner, making an argument against renaming streets after living individuals. Also in the email were examples of Tiffin's, Tiffin's streets, bridges, and conference rooms that were dedicated posthumously, and that individual's individual contributions. Reesner then, then gave the example of Martin Luther King Drive in multiple cities. Most of those renamed, renamed those streets posthumously. He said that the request was well intentioned, but no one serves or takes office to get their names on things. Horniman replied that he would use the phrase "not yet," but it would be something to consider in the future. He then asked the law director for his thoughts. Law Director Fowler said that recently, when these things come up, it has been an honorary dedication rather than renaming the entire street. He used Court Street as an example. It honors the Cronis sisters, but it's still Court Street. This has been done with bridges as well. He added that there are many ways to recognize individuals for their service. A resolution to express gratitude from the council is an option. He, he gave examples of multiple individuals who would be deserving of a resolution expressing the city's thanks. Later on, come back and discuss a street building plaque, et cetera. Jones said we are all elected and serve on council to serve, serve our community because we care about our city, not to get our names on things. City Administrator, City Administrator Nick Dutrow then reminded the committee of the process of choosing a new mayor a few years ago. There was a lot going on with that process. It was not for any ill intention that the city did not draft a resolution or have a plaque of gratitude done for former Mayor Montz. There was a lot going on at that time. Thacker added that the situation was unexpected and not the end of term. Dutrow said he wanted to make clear that there was not a concerted effort to not honor the former mayor. There was a lot going on then. With nothing else coming before the committee, the committee took no action and adjourned at 5:34 PM.
Okay, any questions? Does anybody see the need to schedule a Committee of the Whole, other than the one we've already discussed and I'll announce later? Okay. We are now under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank the voters for the passage of our Road and Bridge Levy, for the continuation of that, that will help us with a great deal of planning and budgeting for future, trying to keep things up to date here with our infrastructure in Tiffin. Also, many thanks to our city engineer, Matt Watson, for his hard work and dedication and all the work that he does to, you know, not only for the Road and Bridge Levy, but in, in all of the aspects of his job. It's, it's not just nine to five. He is on the job when we think he's off. Also earlier, just in case you missed it, we had the appreciation for Mark Hayes for his service to the city of Tiffin with our monument dedication down at the end of Frost Parkway. And this is National EMS Week, May 18th to 24th, and because of that, we have a proclamation for EMS Week, so I'd like to present that at this time. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service that provides critical care to those in need, often under the most challenging of circumstances. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are prepared to respond to emergencies 24 hours a day, seven days a week, offering lifesaving care with professionalism and compassion. Whereas access, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates for individuals suffering from sudden illness and injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services help bridge gaps in the healthcare system by offering a central out-of-hospital care, including preventive health services, follow-up care, and telemedicine support. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system is made up of diverse and dedicated group of professionals, including first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, nurses, physicians, educators, administrators, and trained members of the public. And these individuals, whether career or volunteer, commit countless hours to specialized training and continuing education to maintain and enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the outstanding contributions and commitment of our Emergency Medical Services providers by designating a special week in their honor. Now therefore, I, Lee Wilkinson, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Tiffin, and encourage all residents to show their appreciation and support for the men and women who serve our Emergency Medical Services system. So I'd like to present this proclamation to members of our Tiffin Fire and Rescue staff who happen to be here today. Just like to briefly thank Mayor Wilkinson and you members of city council that have always been there to support the Fire and Rescue Division and our mission. It's our honor to be able to serve this great community. Just thank you all of you for your support. Enjoy the police chief's presentation. Okay, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Chief Paulie to give us an update from the Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank members of council, city administrator, oh, never mind, I don't have to do anything. All right. Thank you very much for allowing me the chance to give you the, the lowdown of 2024 from the Police Department's perspective. I want to start, as I have in the past, with just some numbers, just to have a glance. So in 2024, we had just about 1,000 more calls for service than we did in 2023 at 12,843. So that's a big difference, and I'll go into the, the nitty gritty of that in, in just a little bit. We had a slight, slight decrease in our crimes across the city, which is always a good thing to hear. We had over 300, or 3, 3,500 hours of training. That's the most ever by Tiffin Police Department. My feeling is better-trained officers lead to lower liability for the city. It is a, an expense on the budget to send folks to training, but the return on investment is that we have highly-trained officers, staff, dispatchers, that are aware of all legal issues. They know how to conduct themselves professionally and conduct themselves with the public. So it's a good return on investment to have that good training out there. It, it's kind of a, a law enforcement philosophy, but we, we provide more warnings than tickets in both the areas of parking and in moving violations. And again, I'll go into the nitty gritty, but it's about a two-to-one ratio with parking tickets, warnings to actual tickets, and a four-to-one ratio for traffic violations. Our dispatch center is down to 5.3 seconds, hitting a goal of under 10 seconds 94% of the time in, in answering an emergency call and getting services to the public. The faster we can do that, as you know, the better it is for everybody. Lean this down a little bit. And so I'm just very impressed with, with the, the ladies that we have in, in our dispatch center. They're very professional, and they've all been around long enough now that we're, we're seeing the, the fruits of, of their training and, and labors, for sure. The viaduct was hit 10 times last year. That's less than it was in 2023, and we'll, we'll dig more into the weeds in that in just a little bit as well. Our crashes were up a little bit, but still below pre-pandemic numbers, so still good. We're still good here in the city with that. Our emergency service unit, so in 2023, we had, again, I'll go into the deeper numbers in a little bit, but in 2023, we had, I think, 17 full-team missions out there, where the entire team, our drones, our, our EMTs, our every, you know, negotiators, everybody's involved. We only had four missions last year. So that was, that's, that's an anomaly. We've already had four missions this year. We might have had five this year already, so we probably won't see that again, but it was a good year last year with that. And then obviously, just some pics of the officers out there engaging with the public, and that kind of leads me to my next slide. So everyone always asks themselves, what's, what's our why, right? What, what's your personal why? What's your professional why? And so going into my, my fourth year as chief, as I'm writing the annual report, it, it kind of occurred to me that maybe I need to think about what is our agency-wide why? And instead of me coming up with that, I decided to put it out to the Police Department and ask the members of the Police Department to come up with their whys for this department, for our agency. And I thought it important to, to maybe read some of those responses from your, the members of your Police Department, so you understand maybe the culture and what is going on at the Police Department, and, and so I want you to hear from them. So when I asked the reasons, what is our why? The first thing that came up was safety. At the heart of our mission is the protection of life and property. We exist to ensure that every resident, business, and visitor in Tiffin feels secure in their homes, workplaces, and public spaces. Our officers work daily to prevent crime, respond to emergencies, and provide a visible presence that deters threats to public safety. Trust. Trust is not given, it's earned. We build and maintain trust through transparency, accountability, and ethical decision-making. From body-worn cameras to community engagement, we work tirelessly to show the public that we are here to serve them with integrity. Service. Law enforcement is more than just enforcing laws. It's about serving people, whether assisting a stranded motorist, helping a lost child find their way home, or supporting victims of crime. We should go beyond the badge to be a lifeline in times of need. Justice. We uphold the law with fairness and impartiality. We should ensure that justice is served while protecting the rights of all individuals. We work closely with the courts, prosecutors, and community partners to hold offenders accountable while treating every person with dignity. Prevention. The best crime is the one that never happens. Our proactive policing strategies, school resource programs, crime prevention initiatives are designed to stop problems before they start. From tackling drug abuse to reducing repeat offenses, we invest in solutions that build a safer future. Compassion. Law enforcement is not just about enforcing laws. It's about helping people in their most vulnerable moments. Whether responding to a mental health crisis, comforting a victim of violence, or providing resources for those in need, we lead with empathy and understanding. Leadership. We set the example for professionalism and accountability. Through continuous training, high ethical standards, and a commitment to excellence, Tiffin PD officers embody the leadership necessary to protect our city. Education. Knowledge is power, and we believe in empowering our community through, through programs like DARE, self-defense classes, the public safety workshops. We equipped our community with the skills to make responsible choices and to stay safe. Community. We don't just police our community. We are a part of this community. We build relationships through outreach programs, school visits, neighborhood meetings, and partnerships with local organizations. We foster a culture of law enforcement, and the public work together to create a thriving Tiffin. Commitment. Our why is not just a statement, it's a promise. We are committed to serving with honor, protecting with courage, and leading with integrity. Every call we answer, every hand we shake, every life we impact reflects unwavering dedication to the people of Tiffin. And those are remarks from the men and women of the Tiffin Police Department, and I thought it important you hear that. All right, some staff changes in 2024. We had zero people depart the Police Department in 2024, and I wear that as a badge of honor, and I'll, I'll say that's why in a moment. We hired two officers through the lateral transfer option that you all helped provide for the Police Department, but zero people were promoted last year. Some work anniversary milestones. We had one officer and three dispatchers reach their one-year anniversary. We had a civilian staff and three officers reach their five-year mark. Four officers reached 10 years, and one officer reached his 30-year anniversary, work anniversary. Our Police Department takes a robust approach to goals and objectives, and since I've been chief, I write a ton of, of goals every year for the department. As much as I think vision and mission are necessary for every agency out there, I, I don't care if it's a private or public agency, should have a vision and mission. By setting goals, you give a roadmap to your people as to what they should be doing to reach that vision and mission. And so in 2024, we set 43 goals. We reached 92% of those goals. The other 8%, we reevaluated and determined if they were viable for 2025. If they were, we put them in those sets of goals for 2025. And our top three goals for 2025 are the same top three goals that we had in 2024, which is recruitment and retaining high-caliber talent out there and bringing them here. Wellness and resiliency for our staff, and continued community engagement and collaboration. Some non-statistical notables, some highlights. As I, as mentioned before, lateral transfers, we got two outstanding officers through the lateral transfer portal. Our DARE program returned after 20 years. Our wellness program continues to grow. We, we changed our department patch. So our department patch is about 50 years old. This one that I'm wearing here is about 50 years old. And the chief that created it at the time was an avid stamp collector. And so if you look at this patch, you can see the whole stamp collecting kind of thing coming out here. But there was nothing that attached us to the city, nothing that gave a historical nod, nothing to the PD. And so I put this out to the department and asked for ideas, any thoughts, and overwhelmingly, most people did not want to change much of anything at all. The retired officers and dispatchers certainly didn't want to change anything. This was their patch. They don't want to change that. They didn't want to see that change. The veteran officers certainly didn't want to see much change. There were a few other ideas out there, but overwhelmingly, what we came up with was just a nod to the establishment of the Tiffin Police Department, which is 1851. And so we took this patch, and on the banner tail, we wrote 1851. And I don't think any other department heads around here provided any sort of gifts for everybody. But if Councilman Snee, if you would pass these around. But if Councilman Snay, if you would pass these around to everybody, I would appreciate that. That's a, a gift from the police department to you that no other department head did. Welcome. We have a aggressive strategy for recruitment in 2024, which continues in 2025. Beth Dell leads that team and does an outstanding job for us at the police department. The solar eclipse was in 2024, and there was a lot of planning, a lot of collaboration. And when it came down to the eclipse, the execution was, was excellent. We did see some things that, thank you. We did see some things that exposed us, though. We saw some areas that we needed to, to do better in, which is always great to have that, so that we know next time in a big event, these are some of the other things that we're going to have to do. But we did a lot right, and the collaboration with the other law enforcement agencies, with the other services and departments around the city, it, it turned out really, really well for everybody. Our drug task force made some personnel and strategic adjustments in 2024, and I can tell you that they were very successful last year, and we'll get into those numbers in just a second. And community engagement met new levels again for the police department, working with Heidelberg and Tiffin University on, on different collaborative things, and just working with the partnerships with, with other law enforcement out there, as, as you heard the city administrator reflect earlier. And I don't chase morale, but you know it when you see it, and you know it when you feel it. And I can tell you right now, at the Tiffin Police Department, our morale is up. We are moving upward with that, and it won't always be that way, and there are going to be really bad moments at, at the police department and for the city, as, as we saw in 2024. But I can tell you by and large, the morale of the Tiffin Police Department is, is moving forward, is moving upward, so that's a good thing. We have three divisions at the police department. Our patrol division is the backbone, the largest division. We have one lieutenant, six sergeants, 15 officers, and one school resource officer. Criminal division is our detective bureau, and that's made up of one lieutenant, two detectives, a task force officer, and our administrative professional. And our communications division, which is our dispatchers, we have one dispatch supervisor and six dispatchers that run the show there, and they all work together to form the police department. So patrol division stats for 2024, just a few of them I'll hit on. We increased our calls for services, as I, I had mentioned, by about 1,000 calls. I call this the Officer Sean Valerie effect. He moved from the detective bureau. He wanted a change. He had been a detective for a long, long time and decided that, you know what? I want to go back to the road, and, and so he came to the road, and all of a sudden, he was, he was the guy out there, and still is the guy out there, and, and he's, he's, he's knocking them dead every day. He's doing a great job for us. But I attribute at least some of those numbers to, to Sean Valerie, coming back to the road patrol. Our crashes are down and still below pre-pandemic levels. Our traffic stops were up, about a four to one ratio, as I had mentioned before, and our parking was a little less than what we've had in 2023, but it's still about a two to one ratio, warnings to tickets. Our top locations for accidents last year are always typically the same, just about the same. Certainly, the top three are always the same. Walmart, Kroger, and McDonald's parking lots, the fender benders, the bumping into each other kind of thing. We see that a lot. But we, for the first time since I've been chief, we've seen five locations that are public roadways, including the viaduct, that made the top 10 list. So again, the viaduct was hit 10 times last year, and as in years past, I kind of tongue-in-cheek give some, some thoughts to council on maybe what we can do to, to fix that problem. I've done this in the past. This year, though, we came up with something really good, I think. So it's called a soft stop barrier system. And what it is, is it's a, it uses infrared lights, and it can tell, lasers that can tell that a truck is too big to, to make it underneath the viaduct, that it's just not going to make it. And so when that happens, when it detects that, a stream of thin water shoots down, kind of like a curtain, and then it projects a stop sign and would stop that truck right, right in its tracks. Well, you'd think, you'd hope, anyway. Anyway, it's expensive, but I thought I'd throw it out there, as I do in, in the past, so just giving you food for thought. All right, some stats from our criminal division. Our cases were down from previous years, which kind of coincides with our crime rate also going down, which all of that is a good thing. We closed about the same number of cases as we did in 2023, and about 20% of our cases were closed by arrest. We had 54 felony arrests and 23 misdemeanor arrests by that division alone. In our dispatch center, we had about the same number of radio communication between police in our dispatch center and our EMS, fire and EMS. So that's all the radio traffic that they have with all of, all of us out there. We had an increase in walk-in complaints, so when, when someone comes into the police department, they go to the desk and they make a complaint to the dispatchers, and they decide what to do with it next. And we had 263 instances, instances where the dispatchers handling 911 complaints or issues over the phone did so without any officer involvement. So oftentimes, these dispatchers kind of just take things that they're able to handle without bringing an officer into it. So yeah, good stuff. Our records department is handled by one lady, Patty Huffman, who always does so with a smile on her face. I don't know if you all know Patty, but that was, that was a little bit of sarcasm, a little bit. She, she knows, I joke about that, so she knows that that's all good. She handles all the requests for open records, parking tickets, court expungements. She handles things internally for us that the state requires of us, and she, she handles those stats as well. So she does a lot of work for one person, and she, she really does just a superior job for, for the city of Tiffin when it comes to records. Our drug task force, as I had mentioned, changed personnel, changed some strategies. We had 66 overdose investigations, a slight increase from 2023. We had four overdose fatalities, which was the same as 2023. But really, the phenomenal thing is, they recovered 75 firearms through search warrants or arrests in 2024 versus only three times in 2023. So these guys are hustling. They're, they're, they're really working hard and doing, doing a really thorough job for us, so very excited to see what they'll be able to do with, we're, we're trying to recruit more people into it from, from other areas. Our regional emergency service unit is made up of a fosteria, fosteria fire, Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division, the Tiffin Police Department, and then, of course, the sheriff's office. What we provide for that, the Tiffin Police Department, as far as personnel, would be the commander of the team is from Tiffin. We have five operators, one sniper, and five negotiators, and three drone pilots. All of that is, is supported by the Tiffin Police Department. That's what we contribute to this team. On top of that, Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division provides three tactical EMS to that team. So we provide an awful lot here and in the city of Tiffin to that team. So when a whole team gets called out, it's a big deal. It's, 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 it's a lot, it's an expense, to say the least. And we had seven activations for the whole team in 2024, but in only three, in, what, three incidents were a full team, and 25 activations and 17 missions in 2023. So there's a hu, there was a huge difference in what happened in 2024 versus 2023. I don't know if there was something in the water that, that reduced it so much, but we got really lucky, so please knock on wood, and we would love to see that happen again for 2025, although we are already moving not in that direction. Our K-9 unit has been a, a great tool for the city. Officer Liz Miller and Leo have made just a ton of, of impact on our city. A total deployments of 78, including traffic stop searches, trafficking, or tracking missing persons and fugitives, building searches, school sniffs of lockers and book bags, that sort of thing, and then demonstrations. So she, she and Leo have done a phenomenal job for us. So thank you again for your support in bringing the K-9 back to Tiffin. Our internal affairs unit investigates citizen complaints, internal grievances, and then administrative investigations into employees who violate policy. And in 2024, we received 34 complaints regarding public complaints or dissatisfaction with the way an officer treated somebody, perhaps. Out of those complaints, the breakdown is, we had one coaching session, meaning it wasn't disciplinary at all, we just needed, and the officer didn't do anything too terribly wrong. It was just, he needed a little coaching to, to fix it, so it didn't, didn't happen again. 13 of those complaints were unfounded, so they didn't occur. 15 were exonerated. That means they did occur, but they were lawful, and four were not sustained. There was insufficient evidence to go one way or another on, on the complaint itself. And then there was one that was sustained and disciplinary action was, was followed. We had no internal grievances filed in 2024. And just as a side note, our body-worn cameras assisted in probably 90% of these findings. The body-worn cameras have been such a great tool for the police department, particularly when it, I mean, it, it's great for evidence, it's great for collection of those sorts of things and for court purposes, but for internal investigations and complaints made about officers, this has shown that, that really the officers are doing right by all of us here in the city. They are doing the right thing, and, and so just based on the numbers that I laid out, you can tell that they are doing the right thing. Response to aggression. So this is the amount of force or effort required by police to compel compliance by an unwilling subject. And we have 32 instances of this use of force, but they were all deemed appropriate and within policy, no excessive force. Of the 615 arrests that were made, this is about 5% of those incidents, we, we used force in order to, to have compliance. Now, I say all of that, and I think it's important that context matters, and I want you to just kind of see where these numbers break down. 25 of the 32 subjects were Caucasian, 7 of the 32 were African-American. One was a female, 31 were male. A taser was used twice. 25 of the 32 incidents, the subject had a history of violence or being armed. In 22 of the 32 incidents, the subject was drug or alcohol impaired and/or suffering from a mental health issue. Officers were injured one time in all those incidents, and subjects were injured six times in all those incidents. In all six of those incidents, EMS responded and cleared the subject at the scene. All right, training and equipment. As I had mentioned, we had over 3,500 hours of training in 2024, and, and you can see where we got all of that training from in different areas. It's not just from one spot. We, we kind of spread the wealth there. And some equipment purchased in 2024. We replaced some tasers, we had some new drone equipment, we modified our laptops for child exploitation investigations for our criminal division. We upgraded servers and radios, we upgraded our case management system, and we purchased a Dodge Charger for the fleet all last year. So that is where our money went towards equipment. Our community engagement is more, frankly, than a platitude at Tiffin PD. It is in our DNA, as I've mentioned before. Our department has increased our community program engagement, presence, our social media footprint, and our non, our daily non-enforcement interactions. Those are really the important ones, as far as I'm concerned, when officers are just out there engaging with the public. There's not, no call, no call for service, no complaint, they're just talking with the public or business owners or whomever. Those are really, really important. But I also believe that engagement is a two-way street, and because of that, we have asked Tiffin University to help with a citywide survey that went out probably six months ago. In fact, I'm going to find out the results of some of that survey in the next, in the coming weeks. But we want, we need to measure where we're at. Are we, what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What do we need to fix as far as the, the community feels? So it's important to get their feedback, too, whether it embarrasses us, whether it makes us think, man, we're, we're not doing this right or wrong. We, we have to be better, and we have to do it for the community. As Sir Robert Peel says, "The police are the public, and the public are the police." So we got to work together on all of this. Just a few pictures of our employees interacting with the public, the battle of the badges, which, is he still here? The fire department won, but I think the community won overall, and I'm going to stick to that. And some other things, obviously trick-or-treating, reading to the students, the Third Thursday events, DARE, all of these things matter, and our officers are out there doing it every day within the community. It's, it's good stuff. As I've mentioned in the past, every time I give an award, I typically mention to the, to the council that no one, officers just hate this stuff. They don't want to be recognized in front of people, at least by and large, most of them don't. But it's, I think it's important, it's important for all of you to see what the, your city police officers are doing, your staff out there at the police department are doing, and it's important for their families to see this as well. So we try and recognize them as often as we can in front of you. And then also some department accommodations as well for, for some folks last year. So what's next? Really, I'd like to just continue the upward trajectory. We're doing some things right, and, you know, and some of the things that we're doing wrong, we're fixing and moving forward with. So I'm really proud of the men and women of the police department and, and where we're headed. A lot of that largely, that is, is because of your support as council, as the city administrator and mayor. We, we keep, we keep doing better and better, I hope, in your eyes as well. We've expanded the DARE program. I'm looking into expanding our K-9 program, but not anything that would be budgetary, budgetarily detrimental. I'm applying for some grants and a scholarship to look into an electronic sniffing detection dog. So this would help with a lot of our child exploitation cases or child pornography cases, where we conduct a search warrant, and we search, and oftentimes, because we're human, we miss things. We miss the tiny micro SD card that's hidden underneath a drawer. We miss some things like that, but an electronic sniffing dog will, will catch that stuff for us. And so it's something that I, if someone were to, were involved in a, in a crime and threw their phone somewhere, the electronic sniffing dog would help us locate that phone. So there's a lot of, of uses for this. In my, in my former professional position, I, I applied for the same grant and scholarship, and we, we did receive that, and we utilize this dog all the time. So I'm looking forward to seeing if that's something that we can do, and I won't do it unless we can do it where it's financially responsible. We are in the midst of trying to upgrade our, our criminal division recording system and soft interview room. One of the things that the city administrator mentioned about these unfunded mandates, we have a multi-factor authentication project that we have to have done, and so we're working, working towards getting that done. The e-citation project is underway, and e-citations are a way that officers can write traffic tickets, warnings, parking tickets, all a little more efficiently. You'll be able to read the handwriting, it'll be quicker, and then it gets delivered to the courts automatically through, through the computer system itself. This will also be an unfunded mandate, probably coming down in the next 18 months to two years, is what we're hearing. And so we have started the project just to see, just to test the waters, to see if this is something that's, that we can do, and, and how it works in our cruisers and getting guys used to it as well. And I would be remiss if I did not mention in 2024- And I would be remiss if I did not mention in 2025, we will have three retirements happening. This is why recruitment is important, because this is not guys just leaving, these are folks retiring. Rob Boer retired at the first of the year. Doug Skornika retires at the end of this week, and Vern Keef will retire at the end of this year, near fall, at the fall time of this year. And so we have some big shoes to fill and promote some folks as well. And so, yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to those three. We do have some shoes to fill there, for sure. Thank you, Mayor, City Administrator, members of council, all the department heads, except perhaps the fire chief, and the continued support of the Tiffin community. And last but not least, thank you to the Tiffin Police Department, the men and women that work there, their professionalism and their support every day. And with that, I will take any questions you might have.
I just want to say thank you very much, Chief, for all that you do. And I know that all of your officers, they take cues from you. So like your attitude and how you conduct yourself, that adds to the professionalism of your police department.
Thank you.
Councilor Reesner.
I echo the mayor's comments. I think the community truly appreciates your transparency and the excellence from the finance committee's perspective, too. When you come and ask for gear and so forth, I remember the body cam, I think that was a year or two ago, you came in, I think there was a grant you found right along with it. So we really appreciate that makes those decisions. The fire department does a good job of that, too.
This is the police department's time. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I was wondering if you could mention, like, Dispatch does such a great job to help them be efficient. I know with some of the non-emergency calls coming to Dispatch, if you could remind people the phone number for non-emergency calls.
Sure, it's 419-447-2323. And, yeah, that's for everything non-emergency, what time is the parade, you know, we have a dog barking in the yard, can someone come out and look? That's non-emergency, so that's the number to call. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So I don't always talk during these things, but I did want to make a comment. I've spent a lot of time recently with Chief Pauli and the sheriff and Chief Wedge over in Fosteria. You know, we often like to say in this community that we're connected, that we work together. That is not something that every community can say. The fact that there's a lot of infrastructure that sits in the city, as far as our 911 systems go, as far as some of our computer programming goes, for all of the county that we share, a lot of that is sitting in this building. But, you know, we collaborate because we have such good working relationships. Chief likes to joke about his relationship with the police, with the fire chief. They, too, have a very, very good working relationship, which is not something that every city can say. So, Chief, you make it very easy to do my job because you work so well with others. I mean, it's part of the Setonka County motto, but I'm glad that we, I'm glad we are able to do that here, and I commend you as being a big part of that.
Appreciate that, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay. We are now under Clerk of Counsel Ann Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to report that we have received from the vote of elections the certificate of the results on the continuation of the existing quarter percent road and bridge levy. The vote, total votes cast were 945, of which 647 were for and 298 against. And that concludes my report.
We're now under Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the month of April. Total receipts for the month were $4,948,057.37. Total expenses for the month were $4,618,909.50. The general fund unencumbered balance was $6,016,29. Income tax receipts for April 2025 were $1,690,687.54. When comparing that to April 2024, that was a decrease of $237,805.46. However, year-to-date income tax receipts are still up by 1.76%. The point type 25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for April 2025 was $206,586.61. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 301 for Capital Improvements for April was $144,987.40. The unexpended balance for all funds was $43,127,549.22, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilor Reesner.
Madam President, I move to accept the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation for month ending April 2025.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, Councilor Jones.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, Director of Law Zachary Fowler.
No report, Madam President.
We're now under Written Communications.
We have Mayor's request for legislation number 25-29 for the appointment to the Tree Commission.
Mayor's request for legislation 25-29 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-25-15 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the administrator's budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation has been prepared for, I'm sorry, F-25-15 has been prepared for this meeting as ordinance 25-50.
Finance Director's request for legislation number 25-16 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the WPCC budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-25-16 has also been prepared as ordinance 25-50.
Finance Director's request for legislation number 25-17 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the WPCC budget.
I think generally.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong, I jumped the line there. I'm sorry. We'll start again. Finance Director's request for legislation number F-25-17 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the general administration budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-25-17 has been prepared also as ordinance 25-50.
And also in the packet is a copy of the April 30 AEP Notice of Intent to Apply for Rate Increases.
This will remain on file at the clerk's office.
And that concludes the written communications.
Okay. We are now under Oral Communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step up to the podium, sign in, and direct your questions to myself. Okay. We are now under motions. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to remove the tableled legislation ordinance 2025-5 and put that back on the table.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, Councilor Hayes.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other motions for this evening? Okay. We are now under Resolutions and Ordinances.
Resolution number 2025-25, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF agreement, on behalf of the City of Tiffin, for construction of the wastewater facilities involving the Inflow Reduction CSO 9 to 13 and 15-point repair project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 2025-25. Councilor Jones.
I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 2025-25.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Reesner.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency first.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 2025-26.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Hayes.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-26 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance amending sections 197.012 and 197.013 of the codified ordinances of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of an existing 1/4% municipal income tax increase for a continuing period of time to provide funds to base certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-5. Councilor Reesner.
I move for passage of ordinance 25.5.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, any discussion? Councilor Reesner.
This is for the road and bridge levy. The community has spoken in the last election. It was certified May 6 with a 65 point, 68.5 approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Taylor. I'm sorry. This is an old paper. Must have slipped in there, sorry.
Dougherty.
Dougherty, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2025-5 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-33, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the Inflow Reduction CSO-9-13 and 15-point repair project and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-33. Councilor Jones.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-33.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Reesner.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-33 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-34, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the South Sandusky Culvert Project, and authorizing the mayor to accept easements and take all actions necessary to acquire easement rights for the project.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-34. Councilor Jones.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-34.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Snee.
I second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2025-34 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-35, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept easements for the widening of North Willow Court, accept easements for sewer facilities, and take all actions necessary to acquire those easement rights with private property owners on North Willow Court.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-35. Councilor Jones.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-35.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Reesner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-35 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-36, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Public Works Department Capital Equipment Fund.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-36. Councilor Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2025-36.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Hayes.
I'd like to second that motion.
Any further discussion? Kathy, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind counsel that this is to appropriate funds for buying the chassis for the salt plow truck for Public Works.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2025-37 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-39, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the North Sandusky Street Project, authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for construction, administration, and inspection services for the project and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-39. Councilor Jones.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-39.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
the project and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-39. Councilor Jones.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-39.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Horniman?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-39 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-40, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance accepting the dedication of the street named Nelson Street, located in the second ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-40. Councilor Dougherty.
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 2025-40.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Hayes?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Snee.
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-44, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending section 135.13 of the codified ordinances to adopt an updated fixed access accounting policies and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-44.
Ordinance number 2025-45, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance expanding the boundaries of Community Reinvestment Area Number Five, originally established in ordinance number 16-4, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-45.
Ordinance number 2025-47, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Street Department budget.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-47.
Ordinance number 2025-48, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Main Interceptor Fund, Inflow Reduction Basin 9 through 13 and 15 Fund, CSO 18, 19, 23, 33, and 37 Fund, ODNR Division of Forestry Fund, Abbreviated Safety Grant Fund, ODNR Park Projects Fund, and to approve the return of the advances to the sewer and general funds.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-48.
Ordinance number 2025-49, introduced by Erin Jones. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sell a 2015 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 to Tiffin City Schools and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-49.
Ordinance number 2025-50, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the city administrator's budget, the WPCC budget, and the general administration budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-50.
And that concludes the legislation.
Okay. We are now under Other Business. Is there anything else? Councilor Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to announce a Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting on Thursday, May 29th, at 5:15 PM in council chambers. We will meet to discuss Mayor's Request for Legislation 25-29 and any other business that comes before our committee.
Okay. Is there anything else? Yes, Councilor Dougherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce a Law and Community Planning Committee meeting immediately following the Personnel and Labor Relations Meeting in city chambers on May 29th, following their